...of 2013. Great of everyone to come to this morning's meeting. I'd ask that you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led this morning by Supervisor Cox.
Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right. We will begin today's board meeting by taking up item number one, which is to recognize Mike Shelser, public defender for his many years of county service. So what I would like to do first is I'd like to give Mike an opportunity to come up and say a few words if he would like, sort of a goodbye, if you will. And then I will be joining you down there to present to you the highest honor that the county can bestow upon an employee. Mike?
I get the first word.
You get the first word, because I want to rebuttal.
That's usually my role. Fine. Good morning. Good morning.
Morning.
You know, I applied to be a judge a long time ago. But since the news arrived, things have been going at an alarmingly quick pace. I didn't really fully comprehend that I was actually going to have to quit my day job through this new thing. I say sincerely to each of you and to my friends who are here, I have loved being the public defender. I really have. I've been doing this for almost thirty years. Championing the cause of the indigenous accused has at times been challenging. It has always been rewarding. I want to thank you really sincerely. I think the only board member when I came on was Mr. Worthley for your confidence in me and allowing me to serve as the chief public defender for eleven years. I'm just starting my twelfth year. You have supported me. You provided the office with adequate resources to carry out our constitutional duties. And I realize that public defender offices can be an easy target, especially in lean budget times, not in Tulare County and not by this board. And I am extremely grateful for the support that you have provided to the office. It's not always popular to do that, and I sincerely appreciate what you've done. I hope that you will agree, even though obviously our most important task is the effective representation of our clients, I hope we will agree that we have been an important criminal justice partner and a valuable team player within the county community. Our active involvement with the justice system has not just touched the courts and the DA, with whom we have enjoyed an excellent relationship over the years. We've successfully collaborated with probation. Thanks, Kristy, for your support over the years. County counsel, thank you Kathleen, and even the sheriff's department. I, you know, I don't mean even the sheriff's department, but I sit at meetings with them, especially in CCP, and the sheriff and I are both shocked to see that we agree on so many issues to our mutual benefit and all of those criminal justice partners. We've worked closely with child support services in the cases that we handle with them and very actively with HHSA as well. We touch so many different aspects of the county family. I've been on the Board of Trustees of the Law Library for over a decade. I notice that's on the calendar, too. I hope to continue to serve in that capacity. Access to justice is what this is all about, and the Law Library really helps to provide that piece. We've had so many successes within the justice system over the years, and I'm extremely proud of my staff. And I want to publicly thank some of my core management staff who happened to be here this morning. Kathy Walker, Rose Laura, thank you very much, both of you. I have absolutely no reservations in leaving the day-to-day operations to them. I especially want to thank my assistant, public defender Lisa Bertolino, who's partnered with me in running the office for over ten years. She has been, and I hope will continue to be, an excellent leader. She's respected by the attorneys, staff, and support staff alike. As you know, in conjunction with providing the best legal services for our clients, I've been very involved with office automation and the IT department for many, many years. I see you guys have your iPads. We haven't quite gone paperless. We're, we may get there. I used to say I'd get there before I retire. I guess that's not going to happen, maybe before I die. And I want to thank Peg and Will and the IT staff. I have almost enjoyed working with them as much as I've enjoyed providing legal services. It's just been, not just a passion of mine, a hobby of mine, but we've done, made some real progress. When I started in the office, we had maybe one PC and a really primitive database, and we've just come light years since then. Couple of special thank yous to a few people. Rhonda at HR&amp;D, thank you very much for your friendship over the years. You've really been a great support in providing the best possible chance at recruiting and retaining quality folks. We can't do that job without you. Kathleen Belsling, we don't always agree on the law, but, you know, the county telephone system says who's calling, you know, and at least inside the county it does. And I know when my name shows up there, Kathleen goes, "Oh, God, what does he want now? What's he going to argue with me about now?" But I truly have always valued your advice and your counsel, and I've almost always followed it. At least once, you and your staff have come to my aid in a big way. I don't really want to talk about it, but thank you very, very much. You guys have done an excellent job on behalf of myself personally and my office. Finally, Gene, I want to thank you and your staff at the CAO's office. Over the years, I guess what I'd say is only you and I and your office know that my own personal success as well as the success of the office would not have been possible without just incredible support and friendship from the folks in your office. Debbie, thank you very, very much for your support and guidance and budgetary matters and just all kinds of other stuff. I really, really appreciate it. Also, you know, I'll miss you. I will not miss goals and objectives, which is really a dumb idea, just to, you know. Over the years, Kristen Bennett has just been, has always had her back as well. But Gene, thank you very, very much. I've appreciated our friendship and your support over the years. Just finally, you know, I'm leaving county employment. I'm not going too far. I'm going from the basement to the third floor or actually out to juvenile right now. It's a good assignment for me. It's a good fit. I don't know if you know that I was a juvenile probation officer before I went to law school, so in many respects, I'm returning back home to juvenile court. They, people were making snide remarks about my height, and they're being, you know, that I'd fit right in there or something, but anyway, I'm very, very much looking forward to it. You know, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sure that as I figure out when my formal swearing-in will occur, I expect to probably start sitting in mid-January. It probably won't be until February until the formal swearing-in. I'll make sure that you all get an invitation. The entire family of the county is invited, and I hope you all attend. Thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it.
All right. Well, you know, I knew, Mike, that's why I stayed sitting down there and let you say your few words. You give a lawyer a microphone, he's going to talk for a real long time. So that's, well, that's why I stayed seated and I let you do your talking down here. But really, it's a great honor and great pleasure to stand here and present to you the highest honor that the county can bestow upon any of our employees. You've been here since 1990, according to this plaque, and I don't really want to go into where I was in 1990, but kindergarten, if that's, if I can say it in one word. Okay, eighty-five, well, I was one year old, so I, I don't know. This is about you, so, no, I'm just kidding. But you've given such a wonderful amount of effort here in Tulare County, and you really have left a legacy. You know, you talk about the public defender's office can often be overlooked and be forgotten. You've always made sure that the public defender's office is at the front of the line in terms of making sure your perspective, your position is always understood. And you were an excellent department head in the county because you really understood and were a great team player, and you realize that Tulare County departments are a team. We are all in this together, and we can't always get our way. And you did that. You gave when you needed to and you took when you needed to. But it's really, really a pleasure to present this to you and sad to see you go, but it's good to see you're not going too far, and we look forward to working with you in a whole different capacity. And again, may the best years of your life be ahead of you and your judgeship, and I proudly present this plaque to you in recognition of your county service. All right. Good luck. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, if we might say a few words for Michael Lee's, the room. I can remember when your hair was all black.
It was a little longer, didn't it?
Yeah, it was a little longer. But, you know, the chairman said it very well, Mike, that one of the things that I've always appreciated you, as a good attorney, you are a very strong advocate for your department, and yet you have been a very extremely good team player with the county. And that is a rare commodity, I think, oftentimes to find. I think also that you may represent a clean sweep. If I'm not mistaken, I think the CAO has run every department head off of Tulare County since he's been on the, in that position. There's three, he's got three to go, he says. But, you know, I think you will make an excellent, excellent judge because your character and your legal abilities are great, but I think your judicial temperament will be even better. And I think you're going to be a wonderful judge for Tulare County. Congratulations to you. You made one faux pas this morning. You forgot to introduce your wife.
I'm sorry. My wife Sharon is pretty.
But other than that, Michael, you are, you are, I'm very proud of you. I'm very happy for you, and congratulations.
Supervisor Shida?
You know, the one thing I noticed is that if you read in the newspaper, the public defender is always kind of an adversary within the system between the sheriff's department, the DA, but that didn't happen here, and that's because of your leadership. I think the one thing great about Tulare County is our departments work together, and I think that says a lot for all our public safety people. The one thing I remember is that you took your, a day off your busy schedule and came to give the Board of Supervisors an iPad lesson. And I tell you what, it's still a big cloud to me. I mean, you went, you went through that iPad so fast, I still only know how to turn it on. But I think that speaks very highly of your abilities and your desire to bring your department along to the new age of the electronics, the information technology. And I think you'll be a wonderful influence in your new position to bring the rest of the judicial system up on electronics. But it's been a pleasure working with you, and I'd also like to concur with Supervisor Worthley. I believe you'll make an excellent judge, and thank you for being here.
Supervisor Ennis?
Michael, thank you. Thank you so much. I'd also like to thank you for that iPad, iPad lesson because, you know, now I know how to even get my password in and get into the conference. No, you're, you're an excellent teacher, and I think you're going to make an excellent judge, and everybody has a right for representation, and so that's what you brought. I know I've sat on, on different cases out there where your folks and the DA, and actually the last one I sat on, you guys came out on top. So I really appreciate all you do every day. Good luck to you. You're going to make an excellent judge. We're going to miss you in the departments you're in, but good luck to you in the future. And like Supervisor Vanderpool, I think your best years are ahead of you. Thank you.
Supervisor Cox?
I have a little different twist. I've been very thankful over the years to have worked with your wife on several projects. She has been wonderful and pleasant to work with, and I'm really thankful that I've not had a whole lot of opportunities to work with you because that means we would have been maybe sitting like, like this, and I hope I never find myself sitting like this in a reverse role. But thank you for many years of service, and I really do mean, I did enjoy working at City Visaya, other projects with Sharon. You know, I think two great minds have found each other, and I'm very happy for you. So good luck.
Well, Mike, you've gotten the final farewells from the board, and please continue your passion for Tulare County and for those unserved, and best of luck in your new role, and thank you for all your service to Tulare County. You will be missed. Thanks, Mike. All right. We are now going to move on, moving from the public defender's office to now learn about item number two. That's a presentation regarding the implementation of the County Tulare, County of Tulare Fraud Hotline. Rita?
Yes, sir. Morning, Chairman Vanderpool, board members, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Belsling. I'm happy to be here to announce the implementation of our new whistleblower fraud hotline. We actually went live a couple weeks ago. We're still working on the Spanish version. It should be up the end of this week. Go this way. Government Code Section 53087.6 states that an elected auditor controller may maintain a whistleblower hotline to receive calls from persons who have information regarding fraud, waste, or abuse by local government employees. Tulare County does have financial and operating controls in place to provide reasonable assurance that fraudulent, illegal, or dishonest activity by county employees, officers, business contacts, or others is prevented or detected. To ensure our controls are effective, though, a fraud hotline has been established to report improper or inappropriate activities within the county organization not identified by existing controls. There are a multitude of ways that fraud is detected. For many years, people like myself, auditor type, have felt that the most common method by which fraud is detected is through tips. A common misconception is that external auditors will catch any fraud in the organization, but the external auditor is only responsible for providing a reasonable assurance that the amounts presented in the financial statements are correct. They don't necessarily go out there and hunt for fraud. The Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, I had to remember what the E was for, did some studies to come up with and prove what we thought was happening all along. In 2012, they presented their results, and based on thirteen hundred and eighty-eight cases covering ninety-four nations, they came up with the statistics of tips were forty, over forty percent of the fraud that had been found in that year, where management review came up with fourteen percent or fifteen percent, and internal audits came up with another fourteen percent. You see that the external audit is down there in the middle with only three or four percent. So it was kind of an interesting thing to see these two studies compared to each other and come up with what we'd been thinking all along, anyway. Examples of complaints that can be reported are an employee is being paid appropriately, such as charging overtime without working the overtime, or a county credit card is being used for personal business, or supplies from the county are being used for a side business for an employee at home. Fraud, waste, abuse, ethics violations, theft, embezzlement, misuse of county equipment, and any other complaints of similar natures could be reported. Any other illegal or questionable acts that have a financial impact on the county can be reported. The fraud phone number is 559-636-5230. During regular business hours for my office, it's eight to five, Monday through Friday, a live person will answer that phone, and we do have Spanish speakers that can help those people who do not speak English. They are usually, there can be a higher percentage of people being taken advantage of in governments, and someone doesn't give them a receipt and takes the money, and this person that doesn't speak English doesn't understand, and they think they paid and someone's got their money in their pocket. That happens a lot in governments all over the US. So we want to address the Spanish speakers very much, okay? If you want to report something and remain anonymous, you can by using the phone line or by mailing a report, just a note even, to the fraud hotline, 221 South Mooney Boulevard, Room 101E, Visaya 93291. That is the auditor's office, and it will get to them quickly. Online, however, you can go to the county's webpage at www.tularecountyca.gov/auditorcontroller and get there online. There actually are two buttons you can get to. On the county's main webpage, homepage, there is a button on the left for fraud hotline. Click it, and it'll take you to the fraud hotline site. And on the auditor controller's main webpage, there is a button. It's actually on all the pages for the auditor controller in the same place, and it has the number on it right there if that's as far as you want to go. Both of those sites, clicking on those buttons anywhere will take you to this page, and you can click on the fraud hotline information and form to report suspected fraud, which is this form right here. Now, you can fill in this form online, or you can print it out, fill it in, and mail it. The first page, whoops, where'd it go? The first page has just about what I just said about what is the fraud hotline and examples of complaints, and what kind of information we need. You can remain anonymous, but we need to know as much information about the incident as possible. If you know the person's name, if you know the department he works for, what was being done, any witnesses, that kind of thing, it will be very, very helpful. If you choose to leave contact information, the auditor controller's financial reporting and audits division may contact them to discuss your report and request additional information. The next page on that report there is what kind of information should be prepared for a report, and that will give people ideas of how and what and when. What happens to the report is also listed there, and that is that the financial reporting and audits division of the auditor controller's office answers the phone during business hours and reviews the information that's provided. And in some cases, they may contact the person and discuss the complaint and request additional information, or the complaint may be referred to another county department or agency for its assessment and possible action if deemed appropriate. We could send it to the DA, we could send it to the grand jury, we could send it to the state controller, the secretary of state, any appropriate agency like that. There are not all things that should be reported on this county fraud hotline. There already exist hotlines for child abuse, child abuse, welfare fraud, consumer fraud, and Medi-Cal fraud, and workers' compensation fraud, and we will refer any complaints received there on to where the proper reporting place is. Okay? And I've gone there here. The actual form, the last page, is what can be filled in, contact information, and then what it was that happened with the participants that did whatever you think is fraudulent, and then the incident with as much details as possible. If you submit the form online, we do have to have an email address to submit it. That's something we couldn't get around. So, but you can print the form out and mail it in, or bring it in, drop it off, and remain anonymous that way. There's another code section in all of this 53087 area that tells the auditor how to do it, what to do it, and the guidelines on how to operate the fraud hotline. But this code section B says that the auditor controller may refer calls received on the whistleblower hotline to the appropriate government authority for review and possible investigation. There are some statistics here from the City and County of San Francisco Whistleblower Program. It's been going on for ten years. Started out the first year with two hundred and twenty complaints. In the middle year there, got up to four hundred and sixty-five. Last year, they had two hundred and ninety-one complaints. Of those complaints, they had thirty-three councilings for employees, both verbal and written, mornings. They had thirty-one procedures changed or reinforced. They had two terminations, one disciplinary action, one employee suspended, and sixteen other types of actions were done. For eighty-four things were done to those two hundred and ninety-one complaints. All two hundred and ninety-one were reviewed, though. The Orange County Fraud Hotline for last fiscal year, they had a hundred and seventy-eight calls. Fifty-four were employee misconduct, three were for contractor misconduct, a hundred and three were referred to other agencies, and eighteen didn't have sufficient information on them for something to be done with them. So you can see that there are things out there. The auditor will provide a report to the board annually to highlight the effectiveness and general findings of this program. I'd like to thank the staff of the accounting, reporting, and audit divisions, and persistent auditor controller Debbie Polonelli is here, and she is in charge of that division, too. And I'd like to thank them for their help and work on this fraud hotline. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions from board members? Supervisor Cox?
I know one of the things you said, Rita, would, would, you could refer this to other agencies. What if someone calls up and says they know of a CSD employee, and, you know, I'm not going to name any community, so I don't want anyone to think there's anything going on, but someone calls in and says, "Hey, I think this CSD employee is stealing office supplies or using the car on county time," or on their, their employee's time, not county time. So obviously, in Tulare County, but not a county employee, what's the process there?
We would review it as much as we could and probably refer it to the board chairman for that CSD. And if there were serious things, then more serious things, we might refer it to the grand jury. It depends on what is being told to us first. We might have to get more information. We could talk to the board chairman and not tell him why we're looking at things. We, they kind of get used to us looking at things.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Any questions for members of the public? All right. Thank you. Nice presentation, Rita, and I think that this could be an effective tool for Tulare County, and we thank you for bringing it to us.
One of my goals when I took office, so it's, we're proud to have it in place now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. We are now going to move on to item number three on our calendar for today's meeting. Item number three is public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under public comment? I see the sheriff is rising and walking very slowly. He must be nervous about what he has to say.
Must be asking for money.
Well, now I'll change my topic. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good morning. Mike Boudreau, acting sheriff of the Tulare County Sheriff's Department, and behind me here is Captain Keith Douglas. I just wanted to take a few moments of your time today to just recognize the proposed allocation through our, through BSCC on the $40 million SB 1022 project. Look, we're very excited here with the sheriff's department. Those buildings out there at Road Camp and the Men's Correctional Field location were built in the 1940s. It's time to move to the future and make some, some progressive change, and we're very excited about that. And I just wanted to recognize a few people. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under public comment? I see the sheriff is rising and walking very slowly. He must be nervous about what he has to say.
Must be asking for money.
Well, now I'll change my topic. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, good morning. Mike Boudreau, acting sheriff of the Tolari County Sheriff's Department. And behind me here is Captain Keith Douglas. I just wanted to take a few moments of your time today to just recognize the proposed allocation through BSCC on the $40 million SB 1022 project. Look, we're very excited here with the sheriff's department. Those buildings out there at Road Camp and the Men's Correctional Field location were built in the 1940s. It's time to move to the future and make some progressive change, and we're very excited about that. And I just wanted to recognize a few people, as well as our CAO. One of the criteria in this planning was that counties were financially in a situation to where the future of this project would be stable. And because of your hard work and the board's hard work through the years, that criteria was met. So, thank you very much to Gene. Just a few others, planning an RMA, Kristi Meyer through probation, and most specifically the team that was put together. Captain Keith Douglas behind me was instrumental, along with Debbie Vaughn, Cheryl Saragino, who I believe was here, was here, yes, she's in the back, and Michael Bowen, Kristen Bennett, Tim Fosna, our lieutenant in the back there. I just wanted to take three minutes of your time to recognize that this is really propelling us into the future with this new building. It's infrastructure that's absolutely needed, as we have all known, and this is just a bright situation for us with the sheriff's department. So, thanks to the team and what was put together. And I just want to take a moment to say thanks to everyone. And did I mention Kristi Meyer? Did I? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But it's worth mentioning again.
I looked to my right and I couldn't remember and I saw her, but she's just such an instrumental part. We work so well together and she keeps me in check on 109. Let's make that clear. But very excited about what the county is doing, specifically with the sheriff's department. Thanks to the board, CAO, and the rest.
Thank you very much, Mike. Sure appreciate your comments. Are there any other public comments at this morning's meeting? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and I'm going to bring it to item number four, which is Board of Supervisors Matters. We are going to start today with Supervisor Cox.
Last Friday, I attended the City of Visaya's Homeless Summit. Had several of the people here in the audience were there as well from our Health and Human Services Agency probation department. So, we were very well represented from the county. I don't know how much got done at that, but it was nice to have that conversation to begin here in the City of Visaya, recognizing that we do have an issue with the homeless population. On Friday, also attended the Sequoia Riverlands Trust Open House where Scott Spear was sent off of the board. He's been there quite some time. And Greg Collins took his place as a new board member on the Sequoia Riverlands Trust. So, congratulations to both of them, one getting off and one getting on. Then, the first five also had an open house on that day at the new location on Center in Santa Fe. If you've not been there, you should go by. It's quite an upgrade from their prior office where they were at and have room to have everything actually located in one place, no offsite storage. They have room for onsite meetings. So, a very good move for the first five. I've been very excited to be on that commission for, how many years now, Dr. Dirksen? A lot?
Twenty-seven.
Seven years, so it's been very, 27, I'm not that old. So, that pretty much does it this coming week. Looking forward to family and relaxation.
All right, thank you Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Ennis?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.
Welcome. Anything for you.
Last week, we had the opportunity to unify with COS, the Rotary Clubs of Visaya and Tolari County to give out our computers that we take to the schools. Opportunity, I went to Altimista School, took three computers there and three to Bellevue School. And it's kind of neat, some of these kids don't even know they're getting them. And they'll come in there and they say, what's this all about? And you say, well, there's your computers. And you take them home and they just get, they look at each other and they're without words. So, what a great program. I mean, it was just, it was just great to be involved in that every year. And thanks to the Rotary Clubs of the Visaya area, Tolari County, and COS for what they do. We also, I also went to the big bike giveaway. That was that morning at the sheriff's office. And thank you Sheriff Boudreau and all your staff for being there and seeing these kids get the bicycles. And want to thank John Billie. Always gives the helmets for all the kids, so thankful to him. And everybody that donated bikes, so it's a great program. Yesterday, I was at Sierraview District Hospital for the, what they call the Pink Ladies Recognition. They've been, they've been doing this for 50 years. It was their 50th year anniversary, and I think they've given over 500,000 hours of time to the hospital. So, that was a great event. There was probably 60 gals there and they probably got well over 100 that do participate in that program. And I also want to help, I want to thank the Porterville Union High School varsity team. They gave me a game ball and it had all the signatures of the team on there, so I really appreciate that. It came real close. Like I told Steve, we pounded those guys pretty bad, so they didn't have much to play against by the time they got to them. Bridgeview did give us a good game and congratulations to Dinuba for another Valley championship. So, that's all I think.
High school football for the, what's that, the 20th consecutive board meeting? Glad that high school football's over for the year.
Well, you know.
Because his alma mater didn't do so well.
I know. Tolari did all right, but we were that close to him. All right, Supervisor Worley?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm very happy to see all of you, and I mean that literally, having undergone retinas surgery procedure for my right eye. I just want to encourage anyone, if you ever have an issue with your eyes, do not hesitate to get to your optometrist, get to your ophthalmologist. I noticed something on a Saturday. By Monday evening, I had the surgical procedure and I had to sit in a particular position with my head in a particular position for eight days, sleeping up in my chair for 14 days. I have found, last night, my first night, first night laying down, I forgot how to sleep laying down. It was very uncomfortable. So, I have to learn how to sleep laying down again. I look forward to that. But my ophthalmologist said that the surgery was very successful. He doesn't want to see me for a month. And other than having a little bubble in my eye, which will dissipate over time, I appear to be doing well, and I appreciate your thoughts and prayers on that. While I was sitting around doing nothing, I developed gout, which I've never had in my life. And that was, I finally got a pair of shoes on today. The oldest stretched out pair of black shoes I own, and they're not too bad. But because of my situation, I've not been too active, but things have been picking up and they will pick up. Last night, I attended an event in Corcoran put on by the Chris Com Company. They are a government affairs company which represents the community of Corcoran. I guess I've done so for a number of years. They give an award called the Leader for America Award. And the recipient this year was Fred Reese of Reese Foods. And so, I was happy to present a proclamation on behalf of the county for that particular event. This afternoon, we have the London Christmas Parade, which is one of the only parades that I've ever been to where the crowd kind of follows you along in your car as you're traveling. But I look forward to doing that. They've been there for a number of years and it's a lot of fun. We have a meeting of the advisory committee for the Upper Kings River organization. We belong to the authority. We have an airboard meeting this Thursday. So, things are hopping as we approach the Christmas season, which will be upon us very, very quickly. And I, too, would like to wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Ashida?
Last week, I also delivered computers to Lemon Cove, Exter, and Strathmore. And it's really heartwarming to see these young kids get these computers because they had no idea that they would ever be able to have these computers. And they're basically nominated by their teacher. And so, they're outstanding students and we give them these computers with our partners to help them with their educational aspirations. Wednesday, I also, with Supervisor Ennis, attended the Powell's Bicycle Giveaway. It was kind of neat. We had it outside in the parking lot and the kids were riding their bicycles, just riding around in the sheriff's parking lot on the west side of the building. But I couldn't find the bicycles that got waylaid to Strathmore before they made it back to Visaya. Thursday was RMA Appreciation Day, where RMA shows appreciation to all their employees. You know, it's always a great event. And on Friday, I went to Madera to a San Joaquin Valley Policy Council meeting. And this coming Saturday, Fresno State Bulldogs play USC in Las Vegas. Go Dawgs!
I echo those sentiments, but from a different perspective. Go Dogs! I just love seeing USC lose. Go UCLA, really, but go Dawgs this weekend. Wanted to go over a few things. First of all, I just want to really commend the sheriff's department and Acting Sheriff Mike Boudreau and all of his team for the work that they did along with county staff and Debbie Vaughn in particular and other county staff to put together the SB 1022 application to bring $40 million of state funding to the county to help rehabilitate some facilities that are in dire need of that attention and that money to be completely redone. That's something we were going to be having to do anyways, but having the state help out with that is going to make life a lot easier here in Tolari County. So, that's something that's really to your kudos and something you should be really proud of. Also, wanted to mention that today, the Farm Bureau will be having their annual holiday luncheon, and that is why the board will be convening again at 1:30, taking a small break, and then reconvening at that time. Really appreciate Farm Bureau for putting that together. And then, lastly, I want to mention, I last Thursday was able to attend the Alpo Irrigation District recognition of one of their long-serving board members who was not re-elected this last election, but he had served for 32 years on the Alpo Irrigation District. Now, that is a really long time, a really long, I don't even know how long it is. My life has not even reached that year. But I do really extend my congratulations to Steve Martin for his service. The Alpo Irrigation District has seen a lot of changes and really benefited from his leadership. And they've moved from an entity that was just trying to get by to one that's generated some revenue for the district to explore some real interesting and innovative water projects. So, that was really exciting and I was real glad to be there. And I, too, wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday season and hope that everyone has a wonderful time with their family and friends and enjoys and remembers what these holidays are about. With that, that concludes the board supervisors' matters, except for Supervisor Worley, who wants another bite at the apple.
Well, I just wanted to comment again on this 1022 application. To put it into perspective, I think it's very significant that there were medium-sized counties, which we refer to as suburban counties, 11 applicants. There were four that were fully funded, the fifth one was partially funded. And of the ones that were fully funded, ours was the largest by a significant amount. Well, there was one almost $39 million, we were $40 million. So, again, this was not a gimme by any means. This was, this represents very hard work by our folks and a competitive process to gain this significant amount of money for our county. When you add us to the $60 million for the jail in Porterville, $100 million of state funding into Tolari County is really quite significant. So, I just wanted to call that attention to that.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move to the consent calendar, items five through 41. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Anyone from the public like to have any items pulled for separate consideration? All right, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Consent calendar is approved. Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to the untimed section of today's meeting and take up item number 42, which is a request from the Human Resources and Development Department to endorse the 2014 and 2015 County Wellness Program and Strategic Response slash Action Plan. Rhonda?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, our CAO and our esteemed council. This morning, HRD is bringing to you a request for you to endorse our 2014 and 2015 Wellness Program and Strategic Response. We actually have four items that we are requesting action on, but we will be doing a PowerPoint presentation as we bring you through the program. Before I start our actual PowerPoint, I would like to introduce some of the HRD benefit staff who have been very active this year. We just finished our open enrollment process as well as our health fair process and our mammogram testing. So, I would like to introduce Gail Rasmussen, Myra Castor, and our new employee Kelly Barker, who are in our benefit staff. And also, Loopy Garza, who will be joining me here at the podium for our presentation. She is our benefit supervisor. And these four are the ones who deal with our customers on a daily basis, who may answer and respond to some requests that may come from you or your dependents. And they do a fine job in working with our employees and trying to resolve problems. And I just give them all the kudos. They will be working very hard the next two years on putting our wellness plan into action. So, as we begin today, our County Wellness Program and Strategic Response Action Plan. And the word strategic response are very important as we go through this proposal in that there are a lot of activities, education, awareness in this proposal that might appear to some to be fluffy or fun, which we want this to be fun. People learn, they develop habits when they enjoy them. But at the same time, it is very strategic as we've looked at our claims information, as you will hear in our presentation. So, as we put together our plan, and it was based upon discussions with many groups, including the Board of Supervisors, who have been a champion for wellness in this county, county administration and human resources, our wellness committee. Our goal is to promote health and wellness through education and initiatives, as you can see, that support employees in making healthy choices in their work and home lives, encourage healthy habits, increase awareness of factors and resources contributing to well-being, inspire and empower individuals to take responsibility for their own health, and support a sense of a well community in the Tolari County workforce. Good health, we hope, will result from our program, as well as good health makes good business sense. We have increased job satisfaction when our employees are healthy, generally morale increases. We have lower worker comp claims. And we hope our employees bring healthy habits back home to their dependents and spouses and have healthy lifestyles at home and at work. So, as we went about creating a wellness program, we took a look at what we've been doing in this county for the past several years. We've had previous wellness activities that have included Healthy Tolari County Week that was in conjunction with the board and Health and Human Services. Our Walking Works Challenge, we've done the last two years with the County of Fresno and the City of Tolari. On-site mammography screening, which we just conducted this last month. Pink Tuesday, and our health fair, which we have done for the past six years. This shows our 2013 Walking Works Challenge. And Chairman Vanderpool led a walk with Pete this year at Visaya Government Plaza. That was very successful. Tolari County won in terms of the number of overall average steps, or I should say, in our average steps, but the City of Tolari beat us out this year and we're the overall winner. So, we hope to correct that next year with the challenge. And we'll be looking for the next chairman to help us with that activity, as well as the other board members. Our 2013 health fair, over 1,500 of our employees and this year retirees and special districts attended. We had many activities. Each year, we try to change it up a little bit. This year, we had a new Anthem Art Bike, and Debbie Palalini, our assistant auditor, is shown there in the center picture. Tacoma's has joined our health fair from the beginning. And not only do they give financial information to our employees, but they also do the Hats for Hope program. And many of our county employees make hats for the cancer program. And then, the 211 program is the other picture that, the 211 exhibit, which is, which was also present and provided excellent information to our employees. So, we try to give a variety of health, wellness, mental health information to our employees. So we try to give a variety of health, wellness, mental health information to our employees. So our 2014 Wellness Program, we're calling this a pilot program, a new program and activities to address our risk factors, increase our awareness, increase our employee participation in wellness and prevention events. We don't want our employees just to think about it, we want them to be active participants. Engage our employees in activities that encourage incremental change, but create long-term And our pilot program will measure the success of the wellness and health improvement initiatives that we are putting forth. I'd like to ask Lupi Garza to come up, and she will be taking the aspects of creating a wellness program and looking at some of the information that we analyzed in coming up with our strategic response for this program.
Good morning. When in creating this wellness program, our goal was to focus on illnesses that were prevalent to the county's workforce. This was done by identifying the health issues from our workforce. We offered health evaluations to employees for the past three years. These evaluations consisted of a health questionnaire and blood test. The health questionnaire identified potential health risks due to lifestyle, behaviors, and family history, such as smoking. The blood test identifies health conditions such as high cholesterol, diabetes, high blood pressure, and potential cancer. In addition to the health evaluations, an analysis of our claims were performed from 2012, prescription and medical. The analysis provided information that we could use as focus areas for our wellness Some of the health risks that were identified in the analysis were obesity. Well, first, the planned costs were compared to data from other West Coast public entities of over two hundred employees. The data shows that obesity was a hundred and eighty-nine percent over the norm. Diabetes was a hundred and five percent over the norm, which identified over four hundred and fourteen cases or claims that were treated for some type of diabetes. Arthritis was a hundred and three percent over the norm, cancer eighty-three percent over the norm, breast cancer and prostate were one of the highest diagnosed. It goes on to show that asthma or COPD was seventy-one percent over the norm. So our goal is to improve the health and overall wellness by engaging employees in making healthier choices, changing more behaviors. We want to encourage employees to be active. Habits are not developed overnight. Therefore, changing them will require a period of time to do so. We believe that the plan that we've created or developed will help us to reach that goal. As you can see, we have a very somewhat of aggressive plan for, this is a twelve-month plan, and we have activities scheduled throughout the year, each month. Each month has a theme. The, we planned on, our activities will include webinars, onsite classes, county-wide events such as a walking program. We will begin January with weighting, War on Obesity, and Nutrition and Healthy Eating. We will start, we will restart Weight Watchers. There will be an onsite health coach to help employees develop goals, and then continue as health coaching throughout the year. There will be a live cooking demonstration in February, helping those of us working parents with ideas on cooking quick and healthy meals. February, we'll also offer the onsite health evaluations with webinars and educational information. April will focus on fitness, get moving. We hope to have the Board participate in some type of fitness challenge. There are a number of activities that employees can participate in. Many of the activities will be facilitated by our health vendors, Delta Team Care, Anthem EAP, as well as some local gyms. We will continue to review the activities throughout the year and evaluate its effectiveness.
Before we go to the next slide, I just want you to notice that in November, that's our Movember month, which has been a favorite of Chairman Vanderpool's, but also as you look
And my wife's.
And your wife's, okay.
You brought your girl mustache.
And as you look over to the last column, you'll notice that we've put in there that we are proposing to do onsite PSA screenings, and we are actually looking for a vendor that might be able to provide those exams. We have also are looking back at the mammography exams, because we have had several men ask if they could participate, and we've gone back to the vendor to see if we can do so. So we are an equal opportunity wellness program in trying to reach out and to address some serious health issues in both of our, both genders, and to develop activities also for our male population. So creating a wellness program, we have a lot of activities that are very aggressive, as Lupi said, and it will be very important to measure our goals. And those goals, we're going to focus on reducing the average number of health risks per person, reducing the number of individuals with severe risk, decreasing the number of individuals moving from low risk to high risk, creating our awareness in employees and families, and improving overall quality of life and length of life. And over time, the ultimate goal is to help control our medical trends and mitigate our health plan costs. So part of our program this next two years, the pilot part of our program, is to offer what we are terming as incentives. Some may call them rebates or premium offsets for participation in two areas, and we chose these areas based upon the health claims. One is obesity, so we would like to bring back Weight Watchers program, but we would like to incentivize our employees who participate by actually rebating them the cost of attending the twelve-week program, which is estimated to be a hundred and fifty-six dollars. In the second year, so that we are creating long-term habits, we hope to further encourage those employees to maintain their weight loss, and if they do so, they would receive a one hundred dollar premium subsidy or premium offset. New participants in 2015 again would receive the one hundred and fifty-six dollars if they attend the majority of the twelve-week program, and then the following year, they would receive or be eligible for the premium subsidy if they maintain their weight loss. The second part of our pilot incentive is the health risk assessments and screenings. The actual cost for the health risk assessments are done through the SJVIA, and we're proposing this year that they be done as a part of a claims process, and that Board will be hearing an item in January to that effect. Previously, they have been paid out of a wellness fund, but they are a legitimate claim that can be charged to the claims process, and we've been working with our vendor and Gallagher and our legal counsel on bringing those to be claims, as well as our mammographies. So what our program is doing is also helping the SJVIA to utilize their funds, shift funds to the claim side so that it would free up monies to be used in other areas. But for our health risk assessments for 2014, we would like to encourage employees to participate and offer a fifty-dollar premium subsidy for doing so. We had three hundred and thirty-eight employees participate last year, and in working with our health vendor and looking at the numbers, we'd like to encourage roughly another thirty percent of our overall population, which would bring us up to a very large number of seven hundred and seventy-eight. I don't know that we'll make that goal the first year out, but it's certainly a target that we can shoot for. In 2015, those that took the risk assessment in 2014 would be eligible for another incentive, a hundred dollar premium subsidy, if they had improved results. For example, if they were diagnosed with high cholesterol and they were able to lower their cholesterol, they might be eligible for that premium subsidy. If they had some other illness that they were able to lower or get off of medication, again, they would be eligible for a subsidy. We're working with our Delta Team Care on coming up with criteria to meet the premium subsidy that we will provide to employees in advance of the health risk. And then again, in 2015, we would ask for new participants would get a fifty-dollar subsidy, and in 2016, they would be eligible for a hundred dollar subsidy. The funding for these two activities, we've identified from dividends funds from our CSAC EIA program, and we have approximately a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars available from that program that has to be used for education, awareness, loss prevention. And so those funds have been available for a series of years, and we are wanting to target them. We think this is a good cause to use them for the pilot program. Our Weight Watchers will be open to all employees, including those in TCDSA, PLEMA, and TCCA. However, currently, our health risk assessment program is only open to those participating in the SJVIA Anthem plans. In the future, if we could identify funding resources and if we were able to, if TCCA, PLEMA, DSA were interested and we were able to work with their vendor, it may be that we would be able to bring them into the health risk assessments offered onsite.
Honored, before you go forward, I'd like to address this health risk assessment and biometric screening. I took that test last year. It was very revealing, and when you go to a clinic or you go get a blood test, you get this sheet of paper, and it doesn't, it just gives you numbers. It doesn't tell you anything. It doesn't compare it to anything. But this screening process tells you what those numbers mean, and I think it's extremely important because it's easy to understand, and for me to get probably a premium break this year when I take it, I'll have to lie. I think everyone who's in the Anthem program should take this test. It's very revealing, and it's very easy to understand, and what I did is I sent it to my doctor, because my doctor wanted me to take a blood test anyway, but it worked out real well, and you just send that information to your doctor, and it's also online, that you can email it to your doctor. It's, I think, a great program.
Thank you for your insights and your experience with that. And that is, actually, we want the employees, as well as Delta Team Care, is supposed to be sending it to your doctors, so that we have that follow-up and that, so then the employee can go and have that dialogue with their physician. And it's a way to do kind of a one-stop test. It's easy, it's onsite, and it is very thorough, and they test for, I believe, thirty-five different areas. We've had, as well as your example, we've had some other employees come forward where we were able to identify some very serious health issues and risk factors, and were able to catch it very early. One more thing about our incentives, I should add, is that the rebates or the premium subsidies are going to be taxable, so they would be reported in our employees' W-2 forms. We've been working with our county auditor department and with legal counsel on that issue, and they are going to have to be a taxable amount. So the next step in creating the wellness program is the communication, and this will include the involvement of all of our employees and dependents, which is, hopefully, through involvement and communication, is going to be equally in success. So there, we've identified different areas that we plan to communicate to our employees, including posting through our county offices, lunchrooms, and we listed restrooms because we decided that we have some prime real estate there that we can put educational posters up, and it'll be a kind of a captured audience, and that our employees will be able to get that information. So we'll be reporting back on how well that advertising method will be working this next year. Our wellness committee members, which we are calling our wellness warriors, are at the front lines. They are at our departments. They are the volunteers who will be talking it up and working on signing employees up for activities. We've had kind of a loose ad hoc group and, of our wellness members, and we hope to be having regular meetings with them this year, as well as advising our department heads through the CAO and his meetings, our health plan advisory group, and we listed human resources, but really, that's our human resources advisory group, which is our HR representatives. And the other group that's not up there that we will be having a close relationship with and will be helping us with our education and our resources is our Health and Human Services Agency, which provides a lot of educational programs that we will piggyback with, as well as the resources listed above. In creating this program, it came to light that there are a lot of health-related resources out there that we just haven't had time to explore them further, to make the contacts, and that's what our new human resources analyst and Ms. Garza will be doing. So Delta Team Care is our health wellness vendor for SJVIA, and I don't know if they're in the audience, they were going to try to be here, Katie Nyby and Jonathan Short, who've been reviewing our program and have given us some advice on it, as well as our other resources listed above. And finally, evaluation, which is an important part of any new program, and especially a pilot program. We hope to conduct employee surveys, either in person, online, or through post activities. We'll be measuring those results of the risk assessments, reviewing and analyzing claims and looking at the data provided through our carriers and through the SJVIA, and looking at some cost-benefit analysis, and then looking to adjust the program components and coming back and reporting on the pilot program. And finally, as you can see, our shoes up there are various colors and sizes, just like our employees. We have various health needs. We have different genders, ages. Not one shoe fits all, so we hope to tool up, retool our program, come back to you with new activities after 2014 for our 2015 year, and then coming back to your Board on our pilot program. So that concludes our formal presentation, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members first? I'll look to Supervisor Worley.
Oh, thank you, Sharon. Rhonda, congratulations. I think it's great that you are being strategic in this approach. As I was looking at the claims and conditions and our percentage of being above normal and so forth, I think obesity is a tremendous place to focus in on, because you wonder how many of these other problems, low back, heart disease, diabetes, depression, office visits, emergency room visits, are related to that particular situation, which is something which is controllable. Other things we don't control, but obesity, we can. So I think it's really great that you have focused on that. Also, I think your resourcefulness and finding funding to do these kinds of things is to be, you know, is admirable. So congratulations, very supportive of the program, and good job.
Thank you. It's a team effort here.
Supervisor Cox?
I was excited to see on April, we have a Board Fitness Challenge. I was excited to see on April, we have a Board Fitness Challenge, and so I wrote on the front here, State of the County Address, April Challenge from Cox. So look forward to that. I'll work with you on some type of a challenge. I think we had to talk about that earlier, so.
Push-ups.
I don't know. It might be push-ups, so you better start practicing, so.
We are excited about that, and we'll be talking to you further.
Yeah, so I'm excited about that, Pete. I like a good challenge. I like a good competition and a contest as well.
All right, Mr. Fitness, I mean, Mr. Ennis.
Thank you. Thank you very much. What I always try to talk about is you've got your mom and dad, you've got your brothers and sisters. Look at the diseases that are prevalent in your family history and work around that. I know I can look at this, obesity. My mother and my sister were obese. Did they get diabetes? Yes. That runs in my family. Heart disease, which comes from that. So these are the things you've got to look at, and make time to walk. Make time to walk. Probably the best thing you could ever do for yourself. That's what I try to do. The summer, I've got such a big yard, it keeps me very busy, but in the off-season, you've got to walk. So that's the number-one thing. Great program, though. Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida, any other comments?
We do this for a selfish reason, and that reason is, is our insurance rate is totally dependent upon our claims rate. And it was very evident when we started the joint powers agreement with Fresno, is that our claim rate was much higher than Fresno's. But I think since that time, we've come down. Our claim rates have come down, and I think that's what this policy's meant to do, is reduce our claim rates, not only to help the health of our employees, but also help the pocketbook of our employees. So it's, I'm very supportive of the proactive position that we've taken on bettering the health of our employees.
All right, thank you. And I'll just make a few comments. You know, I'm really glad to see this come forward. We just got back from our CSAC, the State Association of Counties Annual Conference, and there were a lot of sessions dedicated to health and wellness, and I'm really glad to see our county on a local level be taking a look at this stuff, too, because like Supervisor Ashida mentioned, this is the only way that we really can control our claims, and the annual premium is a direct result of the claims data. So if we can keep our claims down, that's going to help every single county employee and their dependents in terms of the cost of healthcare. And so I think it's very important that we do that, and it really is a program of empowerment, letting people know that they have the ability to take their own destiny, their own health and well-being in their own hands. And so I really like the variety of programs and concepts that are developed and outlined here in this program. One of the things that I think would be very helpful, too, that was actually mentioned at the conference that I was just at, is a weekly tip that we could email to every county employee to just focus on, just a quick thing, not something they have to take a lot of time on, but something that just says, on Monday morning when you get to work, "Hope you had a great weekend. By the way, if you do, if you walk for ten minutes a day, that will add up to over an hour a week, and walking an hour a week decreases X, Y, Z." Or, you know, eating this much fruit and vegetables on a daily basis will help result in this. Any random tip, you only have to come up with fifty-two of them, but come up with a weekly tip that can be sent out to all county employees. And what I really hope to see with this program is not something that just stays within the county family. I hope it transcends county boundaries, moves to our cities, and then moves from the cities to the school districts, and then moves into the community to private businesses. We have the ability to create something that people grab onto and really does make a difference in Tulare County. And I know that was one of the goals that I devoted my State of the County Address to, was improving life in the county, and this is certainly one way we can do it. There aren't many ways that we can, you know, rule with an iron fist here in Tulare County because we're subject to state and federal regulations so much, but one thing we can control and help is the health and well-being of our employees, which will hopefully then in turn spread throughout the community. So I think this is a great effort, and I will help you in any possible way that I can. Really glad to be a part of it, and I will take any fitness challenge that Supervisor Cox throws my way, even if it is arm wrestling or bench pressing, because I think I can do very well in both of those. Just kidding. But anyways, with that, that concludes my comments, and really glad to see this.
I would like to add, your insight into a weekly tip is part of our process of doing this incrementally. You know, when you try to lose forty pounds at once, usually you're not successful, but if you take it in little chunks, and you're doing two or five, and then the next two or the next five, all of the experts and the materials that we've read say that's the way to do it. So giving a tip every week, trying to change one little thing for that week, and then creating that habit, I think is an excellent way to try to accomplish and create the wellness within our county family. I would like to also add that our counterparts to the North, Fresno County, we have shared our proposed plan with them, and they are looking at that, as well as we will be probably sharing it with the other participants in the SJVIA family, and because we are the first to have a formalized, very strategic wellness plan. So I hope that it will grow from there as well. And your board has been the champions for the wellness program, and I just would like to commend you and thank you for your support, because we've talked in this county for many years about having a formal wellness program. And this is the first that we have actually, as a team effort, by support of the board, the CAO, and by all the entities I've named, been able to bring something forward. And I think that speaks very much to your board in encouraging, not only from the business aspect, from the health aspect of our employees. So I would like to thank you and the CAO for your support.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Worthley?
I was just ready to make a motion. Well, I was going to call for any public comment real quick. If there's anyone that would like to comment about this item specifically, you're welcome to do so. Okay, seeing that, I will bring it back to the board, and we'll entertain a formal motion.
Yeah, the motion actually involves four things. I think, I'd like just to read, because I know a lot of people listen to this, and a lot of our employees. One is to endorse the 2014-15 County Wellness Program and Strategic Response Action Plan. The second is to authorize the use of funding from the county's health, education, and training funds held by CSAC EIA and dispersed on direction of the county's risk manager for premium offsets and rebates as incentives for participating employees during the two-year pilot. Three is to grant authorization to seek donations and sponsorships to augment pilot program funding for promoting participating wellness activities. And fourthly, authorize the CEO and HRD Director to approve employees' paid time off to participate in or attend specified wellness activities subject to approval by each department head to assure success. Services continue to be provided and workload's met.
All right, your surgery worked. There was a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Cox. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you, and we look forward to coming back on a regular basis and just informing us as to the measurable outcomes that we will see, because I know that if we can get this out there, people will grab on to it. We just have to give them the tips and empower our employees to be a part of this program.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. All right, now that does conclude our untimed portion of this section of the meeting. We do reconvene at 1:30 to take up items forty-three and forty-four. Counsel, do we have need for a closed session following the session?
We do. Mr. Chairman, you have items A through D on your board's closed session agenda. I do anticipate there will be one announcement.
Okay, that's great. This meeting is adjourned until 1:30, and thank you to everyone for attending.
I do not accept the premise that there are organized cat colonies on the park. I said, "The park is for people to have an enjoyable time. It's not for cats." Here. This is how you handle, this is how you handle when you have a problem.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us. The chambers are packed for our afternoon session. It's good to see. We will move on and take up item number forty-three, which is a request from the county administrative office to provide direction to staff regarding the proposed Tulare County Legislative Review Process. Ms. Vaughn.
Happy you guys got food first. Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. I just put this slide up here because it's a little easier to see the timeline, and what that is, is it's the state legislative calendar. So as the Agenda Item states, on a federal level, it's a little harder to set policy and procedure because so many things are done by continuing resolutions. We never know when they're going to take up bills of interest, like payment in lieu of taxes, the SCAP or secure rules. Those things are important to us on the federal level. So those types of federal issues, I think that your current policy of your advocacy trip to DC and perhaps developing in writing a platform prior to that, either December or January, is, would be staff's recommendation on how to address the federal issues. And of course, if something comes up in the interim, take them up on a case-by-case basis. The state is typically where we see the strongest and most direct impact to county operations, and so the goal is to just kind of get some direction from the board on stat, on policy and procedures to follow in terms of state legislation and regulatory matters. So what I put up in front of you is the calendar, and this just highlights some of the key dates. There's a lot of little dates and deadlines in between there, but this shows you some of the main dates. January sixth is when the legislature will reconvene this year. As you know, they operate on a two-year cycle, so this is the second of the two-year cycle. And as of that day, they can start introducing bills, or they can bring up bills again that were introduced in 2013 that they carried forward and made into two-year bills. January tenth is the deadline for the budget, and one of the things that our advocacy firm does, and the board is aware because they send out the emails, is they send us an update on the budget, and they also send us updates during these timeframes at various points on bills that have been introduced. So just a couple of dates. January twenty-fourth is the last day that legislators can submit their bills to the state legislative council for review. So the reason that's important is that if the board wanted to introduce legislation or ask a legislature to sponsor a bill, they would need to get it to ledge council by that date. They do, sometimes legislators do get around that, sometimes by just introducing spot bills, which means something that can be later amended. January thirty-first is the last day that they can pass those two-year bills in their House of Origin. So if they introduce something like, say, Amiano's marijuana bill last year, and he wants to bring it back in January, it would have to make it through the Assembly by January thirty-first. February twenty-first is the official day to introduce, last day to introduce all bills. So on both sides, that's the last day. And usually, right after that, like within two to three days, we get a summary, I get a summary sent from our advocacy firm highlighting bills that have been introduced by subject manner. It's usually a huge list. It can have from five to seven hundred bills on it. What I've done in the past with that is forward that to departments that may have an interest in it. The one thing I'd like to say is that at that point, many of those bills are just spot bills. The intention is for them to be amended. They haven't gone to committee yet, and they can be and usually are amended quite a bit. So the reason I say that is, there's normally not any reason for us to, you know, take a really strong action at that point, for the board to take action at that point, and the direction that we get from our associations and from our advocacy firms is typically, you know, wait, let's see what happens in committee, and then if you still think it's a problem, we can respond. Now, the exception to that is that the associations do a couple things, and by associations, I'm primarily referring to CSAC and RCRC. They will send out requests for comments to the county. So one of the things that would be helpful to staff is to know, on those requests for comments that we get in, your preferred method of addressing those. What I've done in the past is I forward those to the departments that I think they're going to have an impact on, but we don't always get a response back. So some policy direction on that would probably be beneficial so that everyone knows what the expectations are and what you would prefer. So during the timeframe from that last day that the bills are introduced to the last day that the committee meets, which is actually in May, May thirtieth, there's a lot of activity that goes on. The dates that I have on there from May sixteenth and May twenty-third refer to committees, the policy committees and the fiscal committees. They have deadlines, which means if the bills have a fiscal impact, they have to get to the fiscal committees and be heard by May twenty-third, or they can't move forward. So that's why those dates are up there. And then May thirtieth is the last day to pass bills out of the House of Origin. At that point, we'll also get another list from our advocacy firm that's kind of an update, and it tells us how things were amended. The key thing about some of these deadline dates is this is when we see that craziness happen. I should probably find a better word for that, but that's what it feels like, where bills are amended very, very quickly. They're not posted to the website until the next day, and lots of times, that's the day they're going to take a vote on it. So sometimes we have a very, very short turnaround. So another thing for the board to consider is how you want bills that might have a critical impact to the county addressed during that timeframe. Do you want that to be a decision that the chair and the vice chair makes, and then the chair sends a letter? Because we typically don't have enough time to get them to the full board for review at those key points in time. And then, like I said, the one thing I really want to emphasize is that our state firm has done a really good job of sending updates on a regular basis. And in, just to backtrack a little bit, in March, we usually get a list from them that's specific to Tulare County, and they base that on what they know about us, areas that we've told them that we have concerns about, and then specific areas. For example, last year, they know that one of our big issues is, you know, all things related to water. So they sent us two lists that were specific to Tulare County. One was just a general bill list that covered other issues that might be of interest to us, like local land use control, marijuana-related, and then we got a separate list that was water. So the third thing that staff would like direction on is how you want to handle the review of those bills of concerns. The recommendation is that the broad county list be reviewed by the chair and the vice chair and the CAO, with direction provided to staff as to whether or not we should bring that to the, you know, any particular bill to the board for consideration, and then take a, if the specific targeted list, like say if it was on gang-related items, we might want to have Supervisor Cox and the vice chair, because he'll be the chair next year, review that. If it was water-related, we might want to have the chairman and Supervisor Ashida review the bill. It's really important that we only have two supervisors reviewing, and there's no overlap on what we're talking about. But developing sort of a procedure for how you want to handle it will probably be the most effective way of making sure that we cover, you know, what everyone wants covered, and we communicate back where necessary. And then if, at that point, we can get direction from the chair and the vice chair in how much you want to have the associations take the lead on either supporting or, you know, arguing with bills that we think might be of concern versus how much the board wants to take a position. So that's kind of the activity that goes on, and it's heaviest in March and April. So that's really when we need to focus, like through the end of May. June, also in May, the May revise comes out in the budget. We'll get updates on that, and there may or may not be items of concern that need to be addressed in that. June fifteenth is when the budget actually has to pass. August twenty-second, that's the last day to amend bills. August thirty-first is the last day to pass them, and then bills that are passed and sent to the governor, either signed or vetoed by September thirtieth. So that's just kind of a broad outline. Any questions?
All right. Any questions? Any questions from board members?
Well, just, just to respond to the issue about what to do when we have these sort of urgent matters that need quick review, suggestion would be that it would be a default position that the chairman, vice chairman would review them, but it would be the chairman's discretion if there's a particular area of interest that he knows other members of the board, because of their service on various committees and so forth, have, that that chair would then, instead of, you know, notify the vice chairman, this is one I want to have Mr. Vanderpoel on with medic, with the mental health issues, this is the one I would have Mr. Ashida on with water issues, this type of thing where people have some experience or expertise. And it's just, it's just a general way of handling it. So rather than trying to identify people right now, we would just have a default position, chairman, vice chairman, but the chairman would have discretion to use somebody else other than the vice chairman for an area that, that they know have a particular interest.
Okay.
I support that.
I just want to make sure I understand, because if it's a bill, like say it's a particular bill of interest, I believe, and Kathleen, you can tell me if this is correct, that I would need to bring it just to the chairman, because if it's then going to be referred to another board member, that way I still only have two versus not bringing it to...
I think that's right.
Right. And in many cases, we will have already taken a position in our platform, so it's not even a controversial issue. It'd be more, I think, the type of thing where you have a cut and amend type thing, where something comes out of the blue, we need to respond to it, and then we won't be able to, be able to do that.
Supervisor Ashida?
I think oftentimes, we depend on the chairman and the vice chairman to go ahead and write the letter prior to a vote of the board, and the board ratifies that letter at the next fall, the following meeting. And we've always left that to the chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Sure.
If your board adopts a platform that's broad enough to support a position, it doesn't have to come back to this board. The board chair can simply stay pursuant to the board's adopted platform, and it doesn't require further action by your board, I think.
But we usually bring it back because it's a public interest of what we did, so.
Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Cox?
And one of the things I asked our council about was having a, during, for times like this, to have a standing agenda item on the agenda that may or may not be used, to word it so that if a bill does come up on a Thursday, Friday, or after our agenda's been posted, that we would be able to talk about that. If, if we could wait two or three days until the Tuesday to have that discussion. So I've asked council to look in the possibility of having that standing agenda item that would be written broad enough to handle the maybe three or four times a year that we might have to take less than immediate action.
We are taking a look at Supervisor Cox's request. At this point, it would appear to us to be consistent with the Brown Act, that we would have to have some sort of cutoff point where anyone who was interested could go to a spot somewhere, look at a document that had been prepared, say, by Ms. Vaughn, we want to talk about Bill ABC. And then that way, the requirements of the Brown Act are satisfied. We're going to give that a go in January to see how it works. Ms. Vaughn knows nothing of this. So I'm just kind of, I did say, I need to talk to you about project for Supervisor Cox just before we started the meeting, so...
All right, Debbie, didn't do it on purpose.
Unfortunately, the way that the, the Brown Act is, is structured, it's very difficult to have a sort of an open-ended item where action is required. Discussion is not as much of a problem, but when you start to do the action, then it becomes much tighter. So we're going to see what we can put together and see how it works.
Have one last thing.
Sure, go ahead.
Oftentimes, we as supervisors are asked individually, and I don't think we've had this discussion, that in the nine years that I've been here, a lot of times, we're asked as individuals to support, whether it be a grant application, or, or a cities that we might represent, or another organization we might represent, to, to write a supporting letter. I don't know that we've ever had that discussion here. I know over the nine years, I've probably written a dozen supporting letters for grants that other organizations have applied for. Just want to make sure we're not, you know, we're, we're all on the same page. I don't know if the other supervisors have done the same thing, if it's a common practice. I know there's a, a heart, pro-Heart grant that I've written a letter of support for, just saying that we support, you know, pro-Heart's mission, and kind of hope they get the grant. You know, it's, it's been along those lines. But I don't think we've had that discussion before as a board. And this, and it could come up that a legislative issue could come to us, and I don't see that happening today, but one of us would support it and the other wouldn't support it. I'm just throwing that out there.
So council, what I've been told in the past is that if we write a letter that has not gone to the board for approval, that that's an item that we can't do retroactively. So if a board, an individual supervisor sends a letter, I usually, the pronouns say "I," and they indicate that, that it's a supervisor, but it doesn't speak on behalf of the board, just speaks on behalf of that.
That's how I've responded to, you know, I, I think all of us have had those opportunities asked to be, participate in particularly grant applications, and school districts, special districts, ask for our support. But it's, it's a support that I give as individual member of the board of supervisors. You know, I use my letterhead with my name on it, but it's not, I don't represent that I'm speaking for the board, I'm simply speaking for myself.
Exception would be if, and I, I don't know what your legislative platform will ultimately look like, but if you adopted a platform that was broad enough to cover, I don't know, Heart Grants, for example, or what category of grant you would call that, or program you would call that, then you would have it as part of the legislative platform. And again, the chair could say, the board has adopted a legislative platform that allowed, you know, blah, blah, without having to go back to the board for support. I think Supervisor Ashida's point of you want to bring it forward so that the public knows what's been done, doesn't require an action item, you could put that on the agenda if, just as an informational item at a future point.
As, as we move down this road also, we, you know, we are going to have state bonds hitting the, you know, the ballot in the next year, or two, or three, or four, who knows? So there might, there may be varying opinions here on this board in regards to those, whether or not we support or not support. Again, just for discussion, because I, I think we need to have this discussion so that, you know, we don't have bad feelings.
And we also have on the regulatory side, you know, we have a lot of issues recently that have been impacting us from agencies. So they're not necessarily coming down from legislation, they're coming down through the agencies. So the same sort of, you know, request for, you know, how you want to handle those would be good. What we do right now, for example, I'm going to keep using water because it's an easy example, we have a person who's designated as the water analyst. So she primarily takes the lead if it's an agency-related matter. If it's a legislative issue, then she and I discuss it, you know, kind of research it. And then she'll typically meet, usually with Supervisor Ashida, to talk about, you know, those kind of pending issues.
There's a, an entire separate kind of legislative process within agencies formulating regulations. And from time to time, your board has asked us to participate in that process, or object to something as not having gone through the process, simply called an underground regulation adopted without public comment. And I don't see what you're discussing today as necessarily addressing that. However, unless it's an emergency regulation, which only lasts for 120 days, the process is long enough with regulatory action that we should be able to come in without any, without the press of time that a bill may have.
Jean, you know, you had comments?
Yeah, I just got a few comments. Jean Ressociato, the retirement item, how retirement does legislative matters where it's enrolling agenda, I think it's a good idea. It is a kind of a crunch time for my office in that we have to work through the clerk to get items on the agenda for the next meeting. So we'll work through the, the item in terms of the deadline issue. And, and that happens often, where we only have a couple of days to respond to grants or some legislation, especially in that critical period of time, right down close to the edge.
But she's really nice and easy to work with, so you just...
Yes, she is. She's doing a great job and...
Oh, we should meet the deadline.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yeah, so we'll work through that. And, and I think a part of the presentation was just to point out the best time to send letters of opposition or support is usually towards the tail end, because they change so much between, you know, February 21st and, and that crunch time, late May. And then CSAC and RCRC, you know, we really play, they help guide us to a certain degree. And there's some, there's some, there've been some issues where they've, they've taken the, the lead, and we've, we've chosen just to let them, you know, let them do that, and we'll just take a stand opposition. But if there are other times where we feel we need and we want to send a letter from us, we're more than happy to do that, and we've done it in the past.
Are you done?
One last thing. In the, in the platform, you know, in your agenda item, you indicate we typically develop in, in December, I would probably push that into January. Because we usually, a part of it, we respond to the, to the, the governor's budget in January 10th. And you spoke to the federal platform, that's always been somewhat of a challenge, getting feedback, but that's why we're having this, this meeting here.
Well, and, and real quick, since you mentioned that, that was the one comment that I had, I thought the agenda item was very well-written in terms of your outline of the process and what your recommendations were. But I did think that we should maybe push the adoption of a formal platform more into the January, February months, because, you know, maybe a, a new Congress or a new legislature may have a different direction that they might be going on, or have a certain goal, and that way we can respond directly with our, our legislative position.
You know, in the past, I think, this, real fast, in the past, I think we used December because we used to go to DC in early February. So we needed to really get it done, you know, a month or two in advance. If we're going to consider going a little bit later in the calendar year, March area, then we, then January's reasonable. But if we choose to go, and we're, right now, we're talking to our federal lobbyists, when's the best time to go, other than the week that TCAG's going to be there? And if we do decide to, to go earlier in February, then we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to bring something very early in January and go from there, which, yeah, so we'll, we'll talk about it.
Okay. Supervisor Worthy?
A thought that came to my mind was kind of piggybacking on something that, that Jean mentioned, which is generally speaking, we rely upon CSAC and now RCRC as being kind of those state agencies, or state organizations to support us. But in light of some more recent things that have occurred, especially with realignment monies, I'm wondering if we shouldn't, and this is a kind of a bigger question, but it almost seems like it's more of a regional issue, more of an interior state of California issue than a coastal issue. I'm wondering if we shouldn't try to work within our San Joaquin Valley Association or something like that, or try to establish a little broader base of, I mean, I, I can see where we would have a lot more in common with Imperial County probably than we have with Santa Cruz, for instance. And when we have these issues that come up that are either positive or negative toward a particular part of the state of California, we really can't rely upon CSAC to represent us, and we can't rely upon necessarily RCRC to represent us, although more than likely we would. My, my point is, I'm wondering if we shouldn't make part of this, and it's a longer-term process, of trying to create, it's not an organization, it'd be, but it'd be more of a contact, if you will, of counties that, where we share common interests, and, you know, realignment is a, is a good example of that, I think, where, you know, we could get on the horn to each other and say, hey, this is what's happening, we're all aware of it, can we, can we have a united front where 18, eight counties or 10 counties are going to be able to write a letter to the legislature, or to the governor, and say, you know, this is a major issue for us? Because the, I, you know, we saw this happen with the realignment dollar. So I'm just thinking about maybe some other way to be more than just a letter from the county to Tulare, but a letter from all eight counties of the San Joaquin Valley, and other, and other similarly situated counties perhaps, so that we might try to do something.
And I think that's a great idea. Two things, one, I just want to go back to the platform thing for a while and just point out that, that doing the platform from those standpoints in January is certainly a great idea. I just want you to be aware that if you want to sponsor legislation, or ask someone to sponsor legislation, we'll need to know what that is in December so that we're prepared for when session reconvenes. So, I mean, that could be a separate title, I mean, a separate board meeting agenda, but just an FYI. And then on what Supervisor Worthy was alluding to, you know, a good example is Supervisor Ashida, when we were, when the board was advocating for more judgeships for the Eastern District, had us reach out to the supervisors throughout the Eastern District, and that was very helpful. And I will say that the one consistent comment I get both from the federal and the state lobbyists is exactly what you said, that Tulare County by itself is, you know, only one voice either out of 58 or out of the entire country. The more that we can do regional collaboration on issues, the larger the impact. So I never thought of it in terms of doing it through an actual existing, like the San Joaquin Valley group. But we do do that informally. Staff maintains contact with the legislative people in the other counties, and like, for example, on realignment on AB 109 matters, I talk to them regularly, you know, on allocation formulas and stuff that's coming up like that. But, but getting from the board more involved direct contact and having a regional collaboration on issues would be extremely beneficial.
Supervisor Ashida?
Since I serve on the RCRC board, there are many times the RCRC board and staff solicits support from the individual board supervisors for certain legislation. That does happen. We have not participated fully in that. But RCRC also would like to have the board's individual supports from its members to strengthen their position when they talk with the state. RCRC and CSAC surprisingly have joint meetings with the legislators. So it's both of them are sitting there in the same meetings, except for, you never hear much, come out of CSAC other than they were at the meeting. So there's not a lot of policy that comes out of CSAC versus RCRC. So maybe we'll be having more input as a board on certain legislative items to help support RCRC's position, or all our positions, and I see that coming in the future.
I do see that RCRC is more engaged in terms of, you know, they've, they contact staff frequently, asking, our next agenda item is on the agenda specifically because they want to utilize it in a public manner to work on legislation that they're working on.
Supervisor Cox, had a question?
Very, very good conversation. You might have answered it. My question would be, is there a Debbie Vaughn in each of the, the counties? Do you know the Debbie Vahns that are in the, in this San Joaquin Valley group that we have? And how close-knit is that group, and what can we do to make that group closer to that? Because I, I think, you know, Supervisor Worthy, you hit it right on the head, we need to have a bigger voice. Because a lot of times when I feel like I write that or sign that letter, it's like, I know it's going on a pile somewhere. And, and they're not going to read it, they're just going to go, here's the yay pile and the nay pile, which pile's bigger?
They do count the piles, though, in the signatures. And so to some degree, someone handles legislation, but it's to a lesser or greater degree, depending on the county. San Joaquin's a great example, because they switch leadership, you know, I didn't hear from them, they were hard to get answers from, they weren't super engaged on a lot of stuff. But now, in the last couple months, I'm hearing a lot more from them. They sent us a lot of really great water information just a couple weeks ago. They want to get involved with AB 109. They have a specific person there. Kings County, on the other hand, has a couple different people, and it's kind of topic debate-related, but it mostly falls to the CIO there because they're a smaller organization. Kern, as you know, the board doesn't always take a very public role in legislation, but, I mean, you all know Alan, and so we talk to him regularly. So it, it depends on the county, but there is always a way to reach out, so.
Answer your question now, now.
It sounds like, no, I mean, it sounds, you know, it sounds like there, there could be a stronger local group, you know, so that when we do send that letter, it has eight county signatures on it instead of one.
It's been my experience that most of the counties besides us have individual staff per supervisor, if not one up to three. And when, like RCRC, you can take the board member of RCRC in that county, probably his staff member, if he has one, will follow up on those type of issues. And on the water... And on the water deal, if, when we put together the eight counties and the Delta counties again, that supervisor that sits on that group, his staff will probably take the lead on those issues. But to answer your question, there are very few, if any, that have a position like Debbie has, uh, on the boards. So you kinda have to pick who's the leader on that issue in that county, and hopefully he has staff to, to follow up with.
Might be a good topic to, to request at the next, uh, Stan Joaquin Valley Association. I mean, the idea that if they had like a, a person that we could contact, then they would be responsible for getting it to the proper, appropriate staff person in the county, but, uh, just to make sure we all have a, just send an email blast that goes out to, and I mean, I'd like to see it even expand, because as I say, I think we have a lot in common with other counties also. It's almost, almost like if you're fifty miles from the coast, you have more in common than you have with people who are on the coast. But the idea that you'd have those contact people so that we could hit a, hit an email blast out to them and, and get, get responses.
And if that board adopted it as a formal kind of a policy, that, that they were going to be more in, they were gonna, you were gonna respond more regionally where appropriate and where the board agrees on it, um, just that would probably help staff in terms of contacting other staff members and getting timely responses.
You know, our, RCRC's up to thirty-four counties now. Since we joined, there's been two other counties, and RCRC is growing in size because of the lack of responsiveness of CSAC.
Well, uh, any other questions or comments from board members? Uh, any public comment, uh, or questions? Okay, seeing none, the chair will, uh, we were just giving direction to staff, so hopefully the direction has been pretty clear about the different subject matter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Debbie, and don't go too far. All right, uh, we are now going to move on on our agenda to item number forty-four, which is a request from the county administrative office to review and approve the proposed criteria for state medical marijuana legislation. Debbie?
Okay, still me. Um, so the legislation, the proposed criteria that was attached to your agenda item was, um, written by county council, and it was based on, um, just their broad experience, your feedback, um, initially, and then their experience both with case law, with the abatement process that we've been using, um, with the difficulties that we've encountered in terms of, um, criminal prosecutions. Um, so it was created sort of as a guideline to provide, um, staff and the associations with some of the key criteria that Tulare County would be, um, concerned about or interested in having included in any pending marijuana legislation. And they developed this list, um, as a result, if you'll remember, at the end of the last session, we had Amiano and Steinberg working very hard last minute, um, on their gut and amend bills to get some, um, pretty expansive legislation passed. Um, and we're anticipating that as soon as January six hits, um, that's gonna happen again. So this is sort of our attempt at being proactive. Um, RCRC specifically has asked that the board review this, um, make any changes that you feel are necessary, and then adopt it so that they can use it publicly and in the creation of their own, um, kind of platform on medical marijuana. So I just wanna run through the criteria, whoops, the criteria real quickly and make sure, um, see if the board has any comments or any changes on it. Um, the first issue is, goes, falls under the category of maintaining local control, and this is the only reason that CSAC took a position of opposition at the end of last section, last session, to the Amiano and Steinberg bill. Um, they have a longstanding policy on local control, and so they were able to oppose this legislation, but they do not currently have a marijuana, um, platform or position. Uh, so the criteria that, um, is included under here is, uh, that regulation includes banning. There's currently a health and safety code, uh, under the Compassionate Use Act that talks, um, about medical marijuana, and the specific code that's cited just says that nothing in this article shall prevent a city or other government body from adopting or enforcing any of the following. And one of those is adopting local ordinance that regulate the location, operation, or establishment. So the request here is that regulation includes the ability of local jurisdictions to ban if they so choose. The second item is that, um, local agencies' regulations would apply. So if the state adopted a framework that was less strict, um, then the local agency's guidelines, that local agency could use their rules instead of the state. Um, RCRC's comment on this is that the way we had it written, um, if local regulations always apply, then if a local regu, local agency has a more lenient policy, um, does that mean that the more lenient policy would apply? So they just would want that clarified. Uh, the third item is that it doesn't grant any rights, that any legislation does not grant rights to, um, medical marijuana. Third one, um, that it doesn't weaken law enforcement's authority to arrest, um, using their discretion. The last one is that it doesn't weaken, um, local authorities' ability to use the civil abatement process. So, any questions on those items?
Uh, I, I wonder if, thank you for sharing, I, I wonder if it would be the, the heading, which says maintain local control, is very broad, and I wonder, would it be more useful to say maintain local land use control? Cause use and place, I mean, it, I, 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 well, my only point is, I, I, I don't want to, you know, fly up to Sacramento, go to Sacramento and say, hey, we've gotta maintain local control. Well, we do maintain local control over land use authority, but when it comes to some, you know, what is, what is medical marijuana sort of thing, that's sort of something that you normally look at state legislation to, to, to deal with that.
Literally, that's maintain local police powers. Uh, we, you know, you know that I was the chair for two years of the Litigation Overview Committee for CSAC, and I'm still a member, and you're also aware that there's a wide range of positions between the counties on what's appropriate for medical marijuana. So in order for us to provide support to those agencies being sued, we have simply, essentially adopted, this is our mantra, that is, um, whether it's Mendocino or San Bernardino, their decision regarding how they use their local police powers should be respected. Um, I don't disagree that you could certainly call it, you know, semantics are important, especially in politics, and you could certainly call it some, maintain local police powers or, or police control. It is slightly more than land use because, uh, we do also regulate, not just place, but time and manner as well, and, um, uh, those are police powers, but not land use pow, powers.
I, I like that better, because I, I feel like the, the, it's very broad saying, maintain local control. We all, we, we all like to use that mantra when we're, you know, talking to state legislators and so forth, but, um, I, I really feel like the more we can be specific about it, the, the easier it is to hang on to it, and the broader we are, the more likely it is that we would lose it all. I mean, that's, that's kinda my concern.
To a certain degree, we've lost some level of the police powers. We're not able to do all that we would like to do, cause we're, you know, we're constrained by state and federal laws, but, but I agree with you, more specificity certainly with land use makes, kinda makes sense.
Well, I think, or, or police, maybe police powers is a better term, because I think it is a little more, it's a little broader than just land use.
Well, land use, police powers are broader than land use. So if you say maintain local control of land use, you're, you're eliminating other powers that fall under the police power that they may exercise.
Land use falls under police powers?
Yes.
I, I would, I would, I think I'd like to see it maybe be a little bit more specific that way in the heading of it, if you will, as we go forward, just so it's.
So I'll make a note of your comments during, and then at the end, you can, we'll summarize them, and you can vote on the changes.
Sounds great.
Okay, so the second one, um, was entitled Preventing Criminal Enterprise, and, um, several bullet points under this. The first was that all dispensaries, collective grow sites, and other medical marijuana operations must have a state license. Um, and that license holder must comply, again, with the ordinances and regulations of the jurisdiction in which they're located.
And Debbie, real quick on that one item, um, that was something in conversations I had had with the sheriff's department over, over time, um, along with the state license, some kind of a state database for law enforcement officers to be able to access. Um, you know, if you're a, uh, you pull a guy over in Tulare County, and he has, uh, maybe credentials from, uh, LA County, how are we gonna know that here in Tulare County? So having some sort of a database, a resource for law enforcement officers to be able to look that up and access it and see whether or not the, the person is legit or not.
Okay, so, recommendations? Or, you're talking about recommends, or in the case of this, if there was a license?
Well, I, I think for a license, for, for recommends, for, uh, it probably could be all-inclusive. I mean, I would ask law enforcement, uh, Lieutenant Sigley is here.
I can tell you that there is considerable opposition in some counties to maintaining a database of recommends or even qualified patients once they get the ID card. Uh, I'm not saying this because it's not, you shouldn't do it, I just want you to be aware that, that the philosophy is different in the, in the various counties. For example, one county I know, when you apply for the card, after they give you the card, they shred your application, uh, and they believe that that's, they want to maintain no records at all.
Lieutenant Sigley, if you'd like to comment, that'd be great.
Marijuana Fusion Center is already tracking that. All, all the counties that participate in Central Valley, all the way up through Shasta, take their recommendations, forward them to the Marijuana Fusion Center, and they keep a database of them. Doesn't always mean they're gonna be current, but that's how we're tracking. We tried, we started it here locally where, um, every time we got one in Rosy, we ran the one we found in Alpa.
Yep. Well, and, and maybe broadening that could be something that we include to be more inclusive of, and representative of California.
Um, the second point is that there's strong criteria to get that license. So, for example, some of the legislation that's been proposed, um, has gone as low as, oh, you can't have a felony conviction within the last three years. It's okay if it's three years and a day, but, um, so the way this is written is that it would be no felony convictions within the last ten years, um, no convictions for moral turpitude, and the operation must be nonprofit, and that there must be an independent audit done once every two years. The third item, um, is that if there are more than two violations of the state or local laws, um, in a three-year period, that, that results in revocation of the license. And the last bullet point is that individuals can only grow at their primary residence, or if they're renting, they have to have, um, permission from the owner to do so. Questions on this one? Okay, the third area fell under the category of physician regulation and penalties. Um, and before I start with this, I have to say that, um, both RC and, uh, RCRC and CSAC have indicated to me very strongly, adamantly, over and over again, um, to the point, I think they're mad at me, um, that they do not wanna go here. Um, they have, the physician board is, um, very strongly opposed to any of this kinda language, um, although there was some of it included in Steinberg's bill. Um, they feel that, that trying to, RCRC specifically feels that trying to address this issue will take away from the broader focus, um, and you'll spend a lot of time fighting on this, um, instead of focusing on, like, the local policing powers. Um, so I guess from their perspective, they're looking at it as what's most important. So I just wanted to make sure that I gave you that feedback that they've passed on. Um, what we had originally come up with is that, um, there be additional regulations and penalties for physicians who abuse the law, um, and ask that they have to do two in-person visits, they have to do a complete physical exam, they have to have a thorough medical history, and that the physicians can't have any financial interest in the, uh, dispensary or collective.
I hear Supervisor Ashida clearing his throat, that means he wants to speak.
I have a question for council. Is there any reason, is it statutory that we have to recognize recommendations from doctors? We're not a pharmacy, we're not dispensing drugs.
The physicians in California that issue recommends do so because if they were to issue a prescription, they would lose their right to, uh, prescribe class one through class three drugs under federal law. Uh, so they issue instead a recommend. That's been, I'd say, informally enshrined in case law as, as something that's recognized. Uh, if you have a certification from a doctor that you have a medical condition that will benefit from the use of marijuana, you have certain criminal defenses. There is one appellate case, of which I'm aware, where a physician was disciplined for recommending, uh, marijuana for treatment of ADHD, uh, which, you, it's debatable how much support there is in, in the medical, uh, science field as to what conditions do benefit from marijuana, but there's nothing whatsoever that would argue it would benefit ADHD, and in fact, if you know anything about ADHD, it, it seems like it would probably make it worse. So that doctor was disciplined, uh, in my opinion, a mild discipline, I think he was suspended from practice for several months, and that's a doctor in Santa Barbara. Um, other than that, there's, and the general rules that govern doctors, they're not supposed to do harm, they're not supposed to, you know, do things that are outside of accepted medical practice. Um, there really is very little regulation, and there is nothing regarding, um, for example, what, what is the accepted medical practice for recommending use of marijuana to a patient? That's, right now, it's whatever the doctor says it is, and in many instances, as, you know, we're aware, that, the, the physical consists of what's wrong with you and how much marijuana do you need to use for it, um, as opposed to anything like, you know.
Well, uh, still, the question is, what standing do we have as, let's say, the sheriff's department in this whole process?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. None, that has to be a state regulation. That, that locally, we could not require that at all. I think what this is, is a list of, like, a wish list, I guess, of what is suggested that we, Tulare County, would like to see in a statewide bill. But we locally do not have the authority to regulate physicians other than things like where they can have their offices.
That's not, that's not what my meaning, my meaning is that we, what standing do we have, specifically, let's say, the sheriff's department? They're not dispensing the drugs, they're not preventing the doctor from writing the prescription. Why do we have to recognize a recommendation at all?
It, because it's, it is state law. It is pretty clear it's state law that a recommend is about as good as you're gonna get as a marijuana patient, um, supporting your medical need for marijuana, and then remove, it removes you out of the criminal realm into the civil realm. Um, we, uh, the, the other option that is available, um, is, you know, in regard to a specific physician, would be to make, um, a complaint to the Department of Consumer Affairs, who, which regulates physicians. As I told you, there's one published case, I'm pretty sure there's not a plethora of complaints on this, at that air, that field. So, um, uh, you know, we could certainly do that if, if we felt that there was sufficient basis to do it.
Well, isn't a recommendation actually a loophole for the medical profession versus a prescription?
It is not a prescription, and as I said, they cannot write a prescription for marijuana if they wanna continue to write prescriptions for things like codeine that are federally regulated and prescribed. Um, and that's how the recommend came to be, was you can't write the prescription, how are we gonna do this? And this is what came up. It's been going on for long enough now that that practice is sort of enshrined in the case law, in both, uh, civil and criminal law as the means by which you identify the patient, as a patient and not a criminal.
Well, we've been talking so much about doctors, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rousseau. Go for it.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I'm not sure if Lieutenant Sigley, uh, mentioned this, but, um, you, you know, we're not wanting, I guess, you said RCRC and CSAC doesn't wanna regulate doctors, but to create a database of, 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 of recommendations so that when you find a a copy of a recommendation, how do you verify if the recommendation is, is an authentic recommendation? You know, it's with my understanding, they're copying them two, three, four, five times, the same recommendation. If we can have something similar that's done for, for over-the-counter regulated medicines, like you swipe your license, and, and, and you can only get so much per month, there's something to verify that that recommendation is, is the authentic one, as opposed to 10 copies of it out in county land.
That's been very difficult.
Not regulating the doctors, the doctors have, have the ability to rec, to issue the recommends. We might not like it, we think, we might think, we might think that, oh, it's funny how there's two doctors in the entire, you know, Central Valley issuing them. We're not going there, but at least verify the authenticity of the recommend.
That's an issue that's, for the, quite an issue for the sheriff, and they have it.
There's no way to verify which one's original. But most of the recommendations are issued on forms that are through Green Life, it's an 800 number where you can call, enter, enter the number that's on the recommendation, tell whether or not it's valid and not expired.
Uh huh.
As far as if they made 30 color copies, there's no.
Unless we keep our, unless we keep our own databases, there's no way of knowing from grow to grow if the recommend has been, as you said, photocopied and moved, you know, to. We know that that has happened.
It's common practice.
Yeah, you know, it'd be nice, you know, 'cause we're, you know, we're clearly protecting, we're wanting to protect the doctors, and we're wanting to protect the, the recipient of the recommend. And, 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 you know, like a barcode or something that, that establishes authenticity or something. Seems like it would be helpful.
Why, why can't we tie the recommendations to the damn marijuana cards that we have?
We're not permitted to do so by state law.
If we can't tie them to our marijuana cards, why do we even have a program?
We're required to have it by state law. We established a fee for it. I think last I knew, we had something like 27 people with cards. It's a very small number, because you don't have to have them. And we're, you know, the state requires us to have that program.
Mike?
Well, you know, you have, and you have some, you know, you know, some places require you to bring in a recorded birth certificate to, to ensure that it's authenticity. It's stamped. You make a certify, whatever. So you make a copy of a birth certificate, you turn it in, it's like, well, this is a copy. It's not the original. That's kind of, you know?
That would not be something, that would have to be something that the state, in a, in a state bill would have to enact, you know, for the state.
But you can't tie it to a doctor or a patient, which is, seems like what everyone wants. But you got 20 of the same doggone recommend.
We, in a, in exercise of our police powers, are limited to essentially time, place, and manner regulations, health and welfare regulations. For example, if someone had poison in marijuana that was being circulated, that would be a county issue. But the, in terms of affecting the statewide program, you can't have a patchwork of one in Tulare and one in Kern, and one in Fresno. It's what's called preempted by state law. The state has preempted the field by occupying it entirely. The bills last fall, in September, that were brought forward, among other things, were intended specifically to occupy the field so that there was no possibility of local regulation.
Supervisor Ennis, what would you like to say?
First of all, what's on this recommendation? What's on it? When you go out, what's on that recommendation? Person's name? Has it got a number on it when it was issued?
It's got a issued number that comes on the form.
Okay.
That's the one you call into Green Life and enter and see if it's valid. It's got a date that it's valid from and to.
Okay.
It's got a recommendation of 12 plants, 99 plants, six pounds, four pounds. And then it usually has a photocopy of an ID, which most of them aren't valid IDs. And then it's got a, an embossed stamp from the doctor and the doctor's.
Okay, then, how, how, how hard is that not to see that they're copying them?
Well, a lot of, they don't have to post them, is the problem.
Okay, that's, that's something that needs to be in the ordinance.
It can be, their recommendation.
They need to post that.
Their recommendation can be voiced. I have a recommendation.
There needs to be something there physically that you look at and that we can't get people to counterpick.
Well, remember, your board's direction to us to bring back, probably next month, I believe, an ordinance that would be different, would, the, the concept of having an outdoor grow with little patches and, and recommends in front of them would be gone. You would prohibit any growing outdoors, you would limit the number of plants per parcel, and you would limit it to.
And, and not to interrupt, that's all the local aspect of this.
Correct.
And we will be coming back in January with our local ordinance and local aspects. But for now, these are just statewide issues, and, and our wish list on, from a county perspective, that's what we would like to see. So I, I mean, where, where we can, we'll, we'll have the questions answered, but we wanna be able to get this information sent to.
I was trying to respond to Supervisor Ennis's statement.
No, I know, and I'm just trying to redirect the conversation to, what, poor Debbie's been standing there for a while without saying anything. This is her presentation, right, Debbie?
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, so any other comments on the physician item? So the next area is violence prevention, and that just means that there, if the state does something, if there's a piece of legislation, that dispensaries and operations must meet minimal security requirements of the structure or the area, unless the local agency has greater security. And you're all aware that we have specific security requirements in Tulare County with our existing ordinance.
And, and will you spell that out on that to Debbie, to where it says unless, or?
It's not spelled out right now. What's spelled out is that it says unless greater security restrictions have been set by the local agency.
All right. Just wanna make sure that's included. Thank you.
The third area is preventing trafficking or illegal transportation. That the bill, and what that means is the bill, any bill should address transportation from a licensed grow site to a licensed dispensary and by a qualified patient in primary care giver. The question that counsel didn't fill in, and we probably need some direction on, is it says a licensed grow site may not transport more than X amount of pounds to a licensed dispensary at a time. RCRC felt that if this issue, if the transportation issue was addressed, it would probably be more like, you know, under the framework of how they transport alcohol versus limiting pounds. But that doesn't mean, again, it's a wish list. It doesn't mean that, not say that we'd like it limited. And the last is that mobile deliveries and online sales are, are banned in all forms.
Quick question. On the quantity issue, how much, or how many pounds do these dispensaries have on site at one time? Is it a pound, five, 500?
Most of the time, it's usually.
Use the microphone.
Most of the time, it's usually 10 to 15 pounds.
At, at a dispensary? Okay.
So, so we, so it could, you know, we could request two pounds or five pounds. I mean, it's not like they're receiving 500-pound shipments and going through those every day.
No. Right now, the way we treat it is if they have a recommendation for six pounds and they're transporting five, we don't enforce it.
But you have, my understanding is that you have.
Oh, yeah. That wasn't headed to a dispensary.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't hear that.
I didn't hear the question. He responded to your question.
She asked if we had came across people before that had several hundred pounds that they were transporting. And I said, yes, but they weren't en route to a dispensary.
Yeah, yeah, they were not.
Questions on this? Okay, and the last area is, well, second to last, preventing access to minors. And what that means is that, the first point is that doctors can't recommend medical marijuana to minors without the approval of the child's primary physician, a specialist, and the state board. Advertising is banning internet advertising and outdoor advertising that may appeal to children, like, you know, cartoons or whatever outside of a dispensary. And the third one is that you cannot grow at home if minors live in the home. And I should point out that that last one, there was also concern by the associations that that probably would not be something that they would be able to effectively negotiate.
It's a wish list.
Amazing.
So health and safety guard, safeguards, the first one is pretty straightforward, that all medical marijuana products must be tested for contaminants and labeled with the THC levels. And the last one is that there should be some framework to minimize environmental impacts, like water theft, pesticide pollution, environmental damage. I mean.
Could, could we require an environmental impact report for every dispensary, maybe?
No.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
You're gonna make it easy for them to do it.
Have any?
I'll make it easy.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying at a, for a statewide wish list, because you look at some of the environmental impacts, and they are very significant.
Well, under, I believe you, you, you could do that anyway. That's, that's under your local police power. So if somebody's gonna try to get inside a dispensary, you could, you could require a special use permit to do that, and then as a part of that, you have to do an environmental analysis that may involve an EIR. That's, depends upon the.
Okay. So that, that's the, the list of the criteria as it's currently written. So the question would be, one, if there's anything else you want to add, and then, first item is whether or not you want to change the heading from maintain local control to maintain local police powers. And then if you want to leave the physician section as it is currently written, or if you, I guess Supervisor Ennis had said, if you want to add any specific criteria related to the, the recommends and how they're.
So we'll, we'll take up each one of those things real quick, but let me just make sure there's no public comment at this time. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take, any, any questions or handle each of these components individually if we'd like.
Well, the environmental impact part of this is if you ever saw photographs of Menesino and some of the other counties, there are full-size commercial greenhouses that are built on environmentally sensitive ground, building them even without permits. So I think that's why RCRC is concerned. They're not worried about our little, our outdoor grows. They're talking about commercial greenhouses that are, are built.
And the public lands. They're concerned about that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, and we can each, so we could take up each one of those criteria one by one if you wanna do that real quick. So item number one is changing the title from local control to local police power. Everyone, just a quick nod of heads. I think that, that would be something that the board would agree upon. The next one was the physician section, right?
Yeah, whether or not you wanted to add anything or specific requirements related to the recommends.
Anything there, board? That you would like to change or just leave it as is?
Honestly, this is a very, very broad brush, and with all the things that are happening with Fresno County, what we're gonna be taking up later, I'm sure RCRC is gonna refine what they wanna do even after we adopt something like this. So I think we're a long ways, we still have to go down the road a few more miles before this thing gets settled.
Long road. Go ahead, Debbie.
I think that was it.
Okay.
The last thing was unless there's anything else that you want to add.
Transportation?
You were talking about, yeah, the, the quantity under the trafficking, transportation piece.
It goes on, yeah.
Next one.
Next.
Yeah, there you go. We're talking about just from wherever the licensed grow site would be to the dispensary.
To a licensed.
Unless you want to add something else, unless there's.
How specific can you get?
Wish list.
How are, you know, how are narcotics shipped from anywhere to a pharmacy?
That's under federal law, and there's a specific process that involves sealing and signing, essentially a chain of custody, certain other things, and inventory logs that have to be maintained in great detail by everyone. They can be audited by either the federal government or the state board of pharmacists and the Department of Consumer Affairs. It's an elaborate procedure.
How about him, he's not shipped across any. Close to anyways.
That, that, that would violate the federal rule against interference with interstate commerce. We would not be able to do that.
Real substance, but.
Okay.
But keep in mind that one of the points mentioned under U.S. Attorney's Guidelines that recently came out was that they do expect that states that allow for medical marijuana or any kind of legalization will ensure that, that marijuana does not cross state borders over to a state that does not have that. So that is one of the, their guidelines for prosecution.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Anything else from members of the public or anyone in attendance that would like to comment on this?
Just something that's.
Please identify yourself.
Lieutenant Tom Sigley, Tulare County Sheriff's Department. A big topic right now that's going on is they're testing marijuana for pesticides and mold and other foreign matter. And there's, I think it's University of New Haven, they've got $100,000 grant from HIDA to do this. So, I mean, it might be a thought of some of these, statewide, some of these dispensaries, if they're gonna sell marijuana, they may have to have it tested.
There is.
But that was included in there, the testing, or was it just for the THC levels? Is that all?
No, no, I'm not talking about THC levels. I'm talking about the molds and pesticides and any other, kinda like, you know, where they test fruit and everything and.
The, the city of Los Angeles has sued and shut down a number of dispensaries, having gone out, purchased the marijuana, marijuana from the dispensary, sent it for testing, and finding that it has chemicals that are not legal for human consumption. And so it's a health and safety code kind of violation. So what they're doing is applying federal law with their local police pa, using their local police power.
Staff report, where this just says tested, labeled, it's, the staff report says all medical marijuana products must be tested for contaminants and labeled with the THC levels.
That is, that is a real concern.
But that was already part of what.
It is.
It is.
In the staff report, it was involved or included.
Okay, okay.
Okay. All right. Gene, do you have a question?
Yeah, one last question. You know, we talked about the various associations. Has the Sheriff's Association weighed in? Does RCRC go to the Sheriff's Group and the CPOC and ask for their, or they do, or do you know? I'd be curious.
The Sheriff's Association is a little, the, the little bit of experience that I have, and that's through the fact that our advocacy firm shares the same office with the Sheriff's advocacy firm, is that they have a little bit of the same situation that CSAC has, where there are different levels of concern statewide. Overall, there's a higher level of concern because you're talking about CSSA and the Sheriff's Department, but they do have counties that, where they just, the thought process is they wanna regulate it, not stop it completely.
Okay. Chair will entertain a formal motion from the board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Trump.
I have a motion by Supervisor Worthy, a second by Supervisor Ashida. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously, and what a way to end the year with a bang, huh? That is the final action of the board supervisors for 2013. That concludes our session for this year. Thank you all for attending. We do, we do have one announcement. Do you wanna make that announcement now or after, after we conclude? So, thank you, everyone, for attending today's meeting. Have a very happy holiday season and a season and a wonderful new year. This meeting is adjourned.
Well, thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're the first chairman I never did not hear a countdown of how many meetings you have.
This is Gene Rousseau, County Administrative Officer, on a motion by Supervisor Worthy, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. At a closed session, the board unanimously appointed Lisa
Bertolino.
Bertolino as the interim public defender. Thank you. Unanimous vote.
There are no more announcements.
No, no, no more announcements. Thanks, Tom. Take care. Boy, these meetings have to launch.